Mayor Ford?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Bullock?
Here.
Councilman Amador?
Present.
Councilman Teeter?
Here.
Councilwoman Carson?
Present.
Councilman Diaz?
Here.
Councilman Mackel Downey?
Here.
Councilwoman Elliott? Councilman Douglas?
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Everybody's here this evening except for Councilwoman Elliott, and she did advise me that she's feeling ill and will not be here this evening, so I'm open for a motion to excuse her from tonight's meeting. Mr. Bullock?
Move to excuse Councilwoman Elliott from tonight's meeting.
Mr. Amador?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to excuse Councilwoman Elliott from this evening's meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. First item on the agenda is an executive session. There was going to be two, but it looks like we're going to just do one this evening. So I'm open for a motion from council pertaining to an executive session. Mr. Bullock?
Move to enter into an executive session under Cadoro Open Meetings Law pursuant to Sections 402 (B) and E for the purpose of instructing negotiators and receiving legal advice relative to the proposed joint marketing and planning entity pursuant to agreement of the members of the Airport Coordinating Committee.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Mackel Downey seconds that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That motion is carried. I'd like to tell the residents that are in the audience that our intention is to be back out and have the meeting, our regular meeting running by 7:00 PM. So thank you for being patient, and we'll be as timely as we can. We're in executive set.
Thank you for being patient. We just got out of our executive session and I am calling the regular meeting, or reconvening the regular meeting. So first item on the agenda is going to be the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. So will everybody please rise, join me in a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I know everybody's probably talked to the young lady in the back selling candy bars, but I'm gonna put out one more little commercial for her again. She still has candy bars. So first item on our agenda is gonna be audience introduction. I'd like to ask the staff to walk around and introduce the audience, please.
Hi, Matt Rippey, I'm with the Commerce City Police Department.
Lowell Richardson, Police Department.
Kim Messina, Brighton and Commerce City Victim Services.
Cheryl Kirstens, Finance.
Maria DeAndre, Public Works.
Will Consuegra, Economic Development.
Greg Armstrong, Mile High Orthotics Lab.
Michelle Claymore, Economic Development Division.
Summer Sorensen-Bain.
Danny Thomas.
Betty Thomas.
Michael Scanlon.
Deborah Bolot, Commerce City Historical Society.
All right, thank you all for being here. Again, sorry about the late start. We're gonna move into our proclamations and recognitions. I'd ask Economic Development Director Michelle Claymore to come forward. We will start with the National Manufacturing Day proclamation. Good evening. I'm gonna have, before we get going, I'm gonna have the, you're all right, you can just stay there. I'm gonna, I'm gonna have the proclamation read. If you will, please, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Proclamation: Whereas the City of Commerce City joins the U.S. Department of Commerce's National Institute of Standards and Technology, the Fabricators and Manufacturers Association International, the National Association of Manufacturers, the Manufacturing Institute, and Colorado's Manufacturers Edge in promoting and recognizing Manufacturing Day 2016, and whereas manufacturing employs over 12.33 million workers in the United States, accounting for 9% of the workforce, and whereas manufacturing contributes more than $20 billion to Colorado's economy, with $7.52 billion in manufactured goods exported out of Colorado in 2015, and whereas manufacturing employs more than 144,000 Colorado residents in 6,000 manufacturing companies across the state with an average compensation of $73,000, and whereas manufacturing employs more than 2,600 people in nearly 100 manufacturing companies in Commerce City, and whereas the manufacturing sector is crucial to achieve the City Council's goal of developing a balanced and vibrant economy to improve socioeconomic status, and whereas the City of Commerce City supports and joins in this national effort to help America's manufacturing businesses do what they do best, make products. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Commerce City honors Manufacturing Day and all the city's manufacturing companies for their entrepreneurial spirit that keep the city, state, and national economy growing stronger.
Great, thank you. I'm open for a motion. Mr. Bolot.
Move to approve the proclamation as read?
Thank you. Mr. McAldowney.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to prove the proclamation as read. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. I'm gonna turn it over to Michelle.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor, Pro Tem, and Council members. Manufacturing Day is a national recognition program that occurs the first Friday of October each year to celebrate modern manufacturing and to inspire future generations of manufacturers and trained workers in field. There are 96 manufacturing companies located in the city. These manufacturers employ 2,648 people with average salaries of $69,368. Representing these manufacturers tonight is Greg Armstrong, owner and president of marketing for Mile High Orthotics Lab, located at 49th Avenue and Monaco Street. Mile High Orthotics Lab manufactures custom orthotic devices, including ankle and foot arthoses, I think I said that right, footwear and scanners. The company started in 2007 and today employs 18 people. Also joining us tonight is Summer Sorensen-Bain, Chief of Programs and Operations for Colorado's Manufacturing Extension Program, which is named Manufacturers' Edge. Summer would like to share a few facts on manufacturing in Colorado with us tonight. Summer?
Thank you, Michelle. So as the proclamation stated, there are nearly 6,000 manufacturers in the state of Colorado with upwards near 144,000 families that are dependent on that income. So we like to thank and add recognition to this vibrant economy that's a necessary critical factor in Colorado. And thank you guys for helping recognize that this is not just a state to visit and live in, but it's a wonderful state to work in. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Also joining us tonight is Will Consuegra, who's our Senior Economic Development Specialist. He is going to be tweeting and visiting with a lot of our manufacturing this week. So look for those visits. And with that, thank you so much for approving the proclamation.
Thank you. I would start off by saying how important manufacturing is in our community, especially, you know, we have to name Commerce City for a reason. Our population, when I was a kid growing up here, the southern portion of our city would double in population every day during the daytime hours because of employment. We're still a hub for industrial and commercial uses, and we have a corridor along Tower Road that we are, we have a lot of opportunity for more manufacturing to take place. And I'm proud of the businesses we have in our community because of the fact that we have a budget that we can meet every year. We have that because we offer employment and a place to live and a place to, you know, places to play. We want to be a whole community. And you can't just have bedrooms and not jobs. And so thank you to all of those folks who offer up these opportunities for employment within our community to employ our residents. And that goes out to all of our manufacturing, industrial, and commercial properties in Commerce City. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to state before we go down and take a picture? No? Seeing none, if you'll all join me down front, please.
Just impose us.
On a three, one, two, three. Okay, thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is gonna be Domestic Violence Awareness Proclamation. I'd like to invite Kim Messina forward. If you'd come up to the podium. I'd also like to ask the City Attorney to please read the proclamation.
Proclamation: Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, gender, and income levels, and whereas domestic violence is widespread and affects over 4 million Americans each year, and whereas despite great progress, each day an average of three women in the U.S. die as a result of domestic violence. One in four women and one in 13 men will experience domestic violence in their lifetime. And whereas children that grow up in violent homes are believed to be abused and neglected at a higher rate than the national average, and whereas domestic violence costs the nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, police and court costs, shelters, foster care, sick leave, absenteeism, and non-productivity, and whereas only a coordinated community effort will put a stop to this heinous crime, and whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an opportunity for citizens to learn provides an opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and support the numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy services and assistance to victims. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Commerce City proclaims the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and urges its citizens to prevent domestic abuse, speak out against domestic violence, and support local efforts to assist victims.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Mr. McAdonny?
Would move to approve the proclamation declaring October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation as read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, I'll turn it over to the Chief and Ms. Messina.
Oh, so I turned it off instead of turning it on. Sorry about that. Um, so I'd just like to thank Council and joining the communities in Colorado and around the nation in recognizing this, um, October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Um, in two thousand fifteen, the Brighton and Commerce City Victim Services Unit responded on seeing over five hundred, um, calls for domestic violence, serving over a thousand victims, um, and including children, um, in supporting them through support, information, and referrals. So, um, we provide an amazing service here in our community. Um, as stated by our current President of the United States, that during National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we shine the light on the violence of a basic human's rights to be free of violence and abuse. We also pledge to ensure that every victim of domestic violence knows that they are not alone, um, that we foster support within our communities and help survivors seek justice and enjoy the full and healthy lives that each of them do deserve. This month, we recommit to standing with our survivors of domestic violence and doing our utmost to extend hope and healing for those who need it. Again, I thank you for your strong commitment to our community. I also thank our Chief of Police, um, Lowell Richardson, and the men and women of the Commerce City Police Department and all their support.
Well, thank you so much for everything you do. Um, we know that there's, there's a problem and, and we're glad that it's, it's being fixed as best it can be. Um, I see that Councilwoman Carson has something you'd like to add?
Ms. Messina, thank you for being here, and thanks to all the victims' assistance. It's a, uh, program that, um, what you do out there is a vital to recovering from whatever happened to that victim. But I also wanna say thank you to Troy Smith and to Chief Blackhurst, um, for making sure that we had this program and that it was working and that we were whole again. Um, so thank you, and Lowell, thank you very much, um, for the work you and all of your staff do out there every day. But no, thank you to everybody. Um, it's, it's an important service that I guess we were lacking for a while there, but I, I know we're top-notch now, so thank you.
Absolutely, it's our privilege.
Great, anyone else? Seeing no one, if everybody will please join me down front Alrighty, that brings us to the Citizen Communication portion of our agenda. Is there anyone here that did not get a chance to sign up on the, uh, Citizen Communication roster that wants to bring an item to the City Council at this time? Yep, please come forward.
What he wants to speak about is on the agenda, so...
Oh, okay, if it's on the agenda, then you don't need to worry about it, you'll have a chance. Um, anybody here for Citizen Communication? Seeing none, we'll move forward with the agenda. First item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial. They are presented to Council for a single motion and vote. Any member of Council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion in a separate vote. Tonight, there are eight items listed under the Consent Agenda. Does anyone on Council wish to remove an item off of the Consent Agenda for further discussion? Mr. Douglas?
Uh, yes, I have two.
Okay.
Resolution twenty sixteen dash one-ten, resolution in opposition of, of Amendment sixty-nine, which would create Colorado Care, a single-payer state healthcare system, and, uh, Resolution twenty sixteen dash one-one-two, resolution supportive Amendment seventy-one, which has increased the signature requirements for placing constitutional amendments on the ballot.
Okay, say that last one again, twenty sixteen dash what?
Twelve.
One-twelve? Okay. Mr. McAdonny?
I was prepared to make a motion.
Alright. Well, while we're at it, um, no, I'll just leave it at that. So, we're pulling twenty sixteen dash one-ten and twenty sixteen dash one-twelve, correct?
Correct.
Alright, that leaves the, uh, Consent Agenda with six items. Um, does any, let's see. Um, I'm open for a motion now, Jason.
I would, uh, move to approve the Consent Agenda without items one-ten and one-twelve, as, uh, stated by the mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Amador?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Consent Agenda. Will the City Attorney please read the titles?
Ordinance twenty-one sixteen and ordinance amending the twenty-sixteen budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado, transferring a portion of the unencumbered fund balance in the general fund to the CIPP fund in the amount of one million one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, transferring two point six million dollars from the fleet fund to the CIPP fund, transferring two million three hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars from the impact fee fund, road and drainage, to the CIPP fund, and transferring two point seven five million dollars from the CIPP fund to the impact fee fund for a total amount of eight million eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, and authorizing the expenditure thereof. Resolution twenty sixteen one oh three, resolution authorizing expenditure of franchise fee funds for electrical conversion services related to the Highway Two widening project. Resolution twenty sixteen dash one oh six, resolution approving award of First Amendment to Contract for New Recreation Center and Infrastructure Construction Services, Work Package One. Resolution twenty sixteen dash one oh eight, resolution in support of Issue Four B, Reauthorization of the Scientific Cultural and Facilities District Tax. Resolution twenty sixteen dash one oh nine, resolution in support of Amendment T, which removes references to slavery and involuntary servitude from the Colorado Constitution. Resolution twenty sixteen dash one-one-one, resolution in support of Amendment Seventy, which would raise Colorado's minimum wage to twelve dollars per hour by twenty twenty.
I have a motion and a second for the Consent Agenda. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, Consent Agenda is approved. Eight aye, um, one absentee. Alright, next we're gonna go into the polled Consent Agenda items. She is excused, you're right. Um, polled Consent Agenda items, we'll start with twenty sixteen dash one-ten. Mr. Douglas, you wanna tell us why you pulled this off the Consent Agenda?
Yes, thank you. Uh, the reason why I asked about pull this off, just away this, this state, this Colorado Care could save the city, uh, quite a bit of money. Um, right now, I think we pay thirty percent or more into the, into the healthcare, as far as our percentage. Um, not sure, right, million dollars, but, um, this would cut that to six point six percent in, instead of what it is right now. Um, there wouldn't be any, uh, um... So for us to, I know we had talked about the study session, we couldn't vote then, and I'm, I'm, I'm for this because of what it would do as far as a city, and it would take care of our employees who don't have insurance right now. Um, I'll show, ask Ken Connell, um, to come, to be here to address, uh, some of the things that, uh, single-payer as far as the Colorado Care supports.
Okay, one, one thing first, before I, um, ask this gentleman to come up. Um, this isn't an opportunity to campaign.
No, no campaigning.
So, no campaigning. I, I need to make that clear before I have you come forward. If you wanna come forward and state your, your position on, uh, the resolution, um, that's one thing, but I just don't want it, I don't want it to become a campaign. Mr. McAdonny?
I, I think, um, before we go down this road, I think we need to think long and hard about what it is we're doing. We talked, as a result of our legislative docket, about items that we could consent, agree, uh, via consensus to support.
Right.
We thought it made sense to, to oppose or support collectively. The fact that we have dissension that has developed since we discussed these in study session where we had an apparent consensus, and tonight where we have an opportunity to vote formally on that, I, I don't want to see us turn these items into potential drama by bringing in speakers to support or refute these items. If we don't have a consensus, then I say, uh, I would actually move that we, uh, table this item and not take an official position due to the, the, the nature of the item.
Um, I, I'm gonna go down the list, but I have some comments as well. Um, I'll start with Mr. Amador. Do you have comments?
No, that must've been on from before.
Mr. Bullock?
I'm going to agree with Mr. McAdonny. Um, at this present time, on the Consent Agenda or pulling it off, we didn't have a chance to vote at the study session, but this is your chance to vote. This isn't a chance to politic the issue. And so I'm thinking if you wanna vote for or against what we declared as opposition or support, this is a chance to vote. This isn't a chance to put out a position on it. That was done in the study session, so I feel like anything more than that, uh, it's just like Mr. Douglas said, we didn't have a chance to vote at the study session, but this is your chance to vote yes or no. And if he wants to vote no to the opposition, then that's his prerogative right now. Um, this isn't an opportunity for debating the issue. We did that in study session.
I'm going to defer to the City Attorney. When it comes to allowing, uh, people to come up and speak on resolutions, um, because of the, the fact that this is a legislative item that the Council has, uh, agreed to put on the Consent Agenda, um, what are your recommendations for the allowance of someone from the audience speaking on it, number one? Number two, um, I, I personally feel that we should take a vote on it because, um, I think we, our residents deserve, um, to know what our position is on it. Um, so I'd like to see a vote, but I'm interested in the opportunity to come up without it, without it being, uh, appearing like campaigning for an issue.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Pursuant to Resolution two thousand eight dash sixty, there's a prohibition on, um, using public buildings for political activity, which would include, um, for advocates for or against issues the subject of an upcoming election, um, potentially. So, um, to the extent that that's possible, uh, you could allow it, but you do have a, a motion to ta, a motion to table that hasn't been seconded, but you could consider, um, other motions for or against to take up the resolution at this time.
Okay. Did you have something, Mr. McBroom? I have a motion on the floor.
Yes, I did, Mayor. I wanted to, uh, add on to Mr. McAdonny's comments. My understanding of the study session discussion was to find out which issues the City Council could take positions on unanimously and not have these become divisive issues amongst Council, 'cause the result could be a motion that passes by a majority of Council that doesn't have the support of some Council members. And I don't think that was the intent of having Council act on these resolutions. We brought forward those resolutions, uh, that when discussed in the study session, we understood them to have unanimous support, the position the city was going to take. So, uh, I would agree with Mr. McAdonny. I don't think the intent of the study session discussion and these resolutions was to have split votes. It, it was to have, uh, Council acknowledge those issues on which you were unanimous.
Alright, thank you. I have a motion on the floor, um, which would be to table, uh, Resolution twenty sixteen dash one-ten. Councilwoman Carson?
Um, I will second that.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to table Resolution twenty sixteen dash one-ten. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Douglas?
Now, this was just only for some clarification. Um, I was not, um, uh, I wasn't opposed to this. So, to say unanimously, I mean, it was consensus, but not, not unanimously, not, not unanimously, it wasn't a hundred percent. So, need to make sure it was a consent, but not, it was a hundred percent.
Clearly, we misunderstood Council discussion that evening. To Mr. McAdonny's point, uh, if there's one Council member who's uncomfortable, I think that's enough to not act on it.
And, and that's fine. I mean, uh, you know, here, I'm, I'm getting things from constituents saying, hey, why is this in the paper that you guys are, are, uh, against this? And, uh, you know, I was put in our Council, uh, connect, and, uh, you know, I made it very clear that I, I was, um, for this, not against it, and just wanna make sure that's, that's understood.
Alright, any other discussion? Mr. McAdonny?
I just wanna add on to, uh, Mr. McBroom's comments. Again, I think, um, I'm not comfortable particularly with an item that is presenting a position of advocacy or, uh, a counterposition to a, a valid item, that that not go forward as unanimous item. So I would, uh, alter or offer an alternative motion, which is, if we do take a vote on this, and this might need to be a Council policy, uh, I will look to, um, Mr. Sheasley for clarification. But I think, you know, with items like this, it does us no good, I mean, again, I, I just don't see anything good, I'm gonna retract any comments. I see no good coming of us voting on an item like this. I think if, if, I mean, just for the benefit of the audience, in our legislative overview discussions during a recent study session, we reviewed the, a litany of items that were on the, the ballot for this fall. We reviewed the positions, the recommended positions on those items as suggested by the Colorado Municipal League, and we discussed where, as a Council, our thoughts in view of Commerce City and in view of the region were either aligned with or i- in a different perspective than those recommended positions from CML. There were a number of items that we didn't take positions on, right? They're, they're on the ballot still, they're not on this list for us to take a position on, and so to Mr. McBroom's point, the only items that came forward for inclusion in these resolutions were those items that appeared to have a consensus. So if at this point we find that somebody was not comfortable with that position, then I think it's as simple as treating it just like we did every other item that's not before us tonight, and so I will, uh, reiterate my, uh, support of my suggested tabling of, of this item.
So we have a motion and a second to table this item. Steve, one more time for discussion.
Uh, please. If we're gonna do this, we need to do same thing with seventy-one. We're gonna table sixty-nine, but I'll table seventy-one as well.
Are, are you seeking to make a friendly amendment to the motion on the floor?
Yes.
I would accept that amendment.
How about the second? So now the motion and second is to table Resolution twenty sixteen one-ten and Resolution twenty sixteen one-twelve.
And, Mr. Mayor, I would just clarify, that, the intent of that is to postpone indefinitely, so there is no vote ever taken on the resolution.
That's correct, sir.
Okay.
Okay, postpone indefinitely. Alright, no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Alright, that takes care of the Consent Agenda, the polled items, and now we're at presentations. I'd like to, uh, start out with Commerce City Chamber Formation and invite Michael Scanlon forward to give a presentation. And welcome, and good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. And with me tonight, we've got a couple of other members of the committee. I don't know if they want to come up or not, but uh we, we've got a number of us here tonight, so when the presentation comes up here, I'll begin. I appreciate the opportunity to stand before you all tonight. I would submit to you all that, and I think all of you know this, that here in Commerce City, their future is so bright that you really need to wear shades. Thank you, Michelle. Just wanted to start with a moment of levity there. All right, uh, thank you for this. I better put on my real glasses so I can see what I'm doing. Do I point it at that machine? Look at that. Well, let's start with the organizing committee. We've got a number of us that have gotten um together to get this Chamber of Commerce off the ground and get started. Uh, there's a, all of these folks have helped tremendously. There's a handful that I really want to recognize right now. Deborah Bullock has been key to this. Deborah was the one that pointed out to me this has never happened, that there's never been a chamber in this city. Uh, Deborah's been there every step of the way, getting this going, and I can't thank Deborah Bullock enough for all she's done. Um, certainly John and Jimmy have done a lot. Michelle Claymore, I want to take a minute to talk about Michelle. I was skeptical. Um, I wanted this to be a one hundred percent private enterprise effort. I think a Chamber of Commerce should be businesses and business driven. Um, so when I met with Michelle, I was skeptical and I was sort of adversarial. And she won me over. Long story short, Michelle has been a tremendous help with this. She has brought a number of important items uh sort of to, to my eyes that I would have otherwise missed. And she's right, we do need to have more of a public-private partnership and not just a straight free enterprise, all one hundred percent business chamber. So I really appreciate her help. Uh, Deborah Agelston's here tonight. Uh, she's a chiropractor here in town. Um, Maria Gonzalez has been key to this. She, uh, from day one, she said we could fold in Adalente. From day one, we had a number of organizations involved, so we could go out and say we're already having success. Um, Gary Ruby's been a big help, Gary Ullam. Um, all those folks have been a tremendous help to getting this off the ground. So let's start with why we wanted to form a chamber. Uh, I think a lot of this you know, but it, it bears repeating. Obviously, the city's growing rapidly. The city has tremendous potential ahead of us. Uh, we wanted to see a voice for businesses and other organizations. And we certainly want to make sure we have the opportunity to promote Commerce City and our businesses um across the metro region. Um, we're certainly always looking to drive business to the community here and ideally see some of our businesses do more business with each other. And then that third point on there, I, I don't like using the word divided necessarily, but I think we can all agree that our, our city is unique in the sense that we've got two communities connected by a giant wildlife refuge. And we'd like to see more ties to bind and what gets people moving more than the ability to make a dollar. So we're, we're hoping that a chamber can help sort of um bring the two sides uh in more contact with each other. And this last point's certainly important. Um, we're always looking to partner with really anyone who has the best interests of the city in mind and is looking to, you know, share these uh goals with us to try and advance the, the better interests of Commerce City and our businesses. Uh, so a quick update on where we're at. Um, what do we have? We don't have a lot yet. We just got this off the ground this summer. Um, that's a little outdated as of this moment. We have forty paid members. We do have a domain name, which you're welcome to write down. I wouldn't encourage you to type it into your browser. We do not yet have a website. We're working on that. Um, we got incorporated as a nonprofit corporation. The five oh one C six line of the IRS code is specifically for chambers. And we've got some bylaws that we're perfecting. Um, here's what we decided to do. I think this is the most important takeaway for you to understand. We, because we had nothing, the question was what membership dues? Can you charge this one when you have nothing to offer? So what we decided was the Centennial Club would be the starting point. The first hundred companies that take a chance on us, and right now we're at forty, it's a hundred dollars to join. And so the first hundred members will be the Centennial Club, and they'll forever be the folks that took a chance on us. They took a risk when we had very little to offer them other than a, a smooth-talking guy with a pair of shades. So we are extremely grateful to the Centennial Club members. We currently have, the goal um by the group might be December thirty-first. My personal goal is to have a hundred members signed up by November tenth. Um, and November tenth is important because that's gonna be our kickoff. Uh, quickly, I, I think this bears uh reading that our, our mission, that the Commerce City Chamber of Commerce will engage and advocate for businesses in the Commerce City community to encourage growth and long-term economic vitality. Again, I want to mention the kickoff. This, I, all of you will certainly get a formal invitation. I hope anyone in, in the city or, or the area will, will feel welcome to come to our kickoff, November tenth, Key Bank, five P M. Uh, you all probably know where Key Bank is, over on Seventy-third, near, near the post office. Uh, it'll be five P M. Obviously, it's gonna be free. We're gonna have door prizes. Uh, we're gonna have a lot of folks there and hopefully a few surprises still yet to be announced. We also have a meeting coming up on December eighth. On that one, we don't have a lot of details yet, so stay tuned for the December eighth meeting. And so what lies ahead? What are some things that you could look for uh that, that we expect to deliver to the community? We'd like to see ourselves creating and conducting both uh some educational programs and other workshops for entrepreneurs and others that are looking to start up businesses here in the city. Um, we're definitely gonna create a directory of not just members. Certainly, the directory will highlight our member businesses, but we want to create a directory of uh any business that operates in Commerce City and pays taxes in Commerce City. Um, we have reached out to and are looking to partner with any number of groups. Here's a list of some of them, the CCBPA, uh, the Commerce City Business Alliance, uh, North Metro Chamber, um, the city themselves. Um, but again, as I said, we're willing to work alongside anybody that's got the best interest of the city at heart. Um, and the events calendar, we can't wait to get this website up. We'd really like to have a, a, a very dynamic, easy-to-use events calendar that anybody can put events on, um, and they can sort of be a go-to spot when you want to know what's going on here in the city. Um, and really, that's the, the, the primary gist of what we're doing. This is one of my favorite quotes from the great Ralph Waldo Emerson. And with that, really, I'm happy to take any questions.
All right, other questions? Uh, Mr. Scanlon on the new um Commerce City uh Chamber of Commerce. Start with Mr. McElton, if you have some?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Scanlon, thank you. Ms. Bullock, thank you. Um, and, and really, thank you to the list of actors that you presented. I mean, we know many of these folks. Some of the names I don't, I don't personally know. But um, again, just hats off for the gumption to get the conversations going. Um, it, it has been something that's been lacking in this community. It's one of the things that I remember learning and being surprised by when I first got on council almost ten years ago. Um, so I love the fact that we have so many of our uh key stakeholders, um, consistent actors that have come together to help make this happen. And I'm excited to see how it evolves and what these relationships are with the existing organizations and how those might evolve over time. But uh, I do think there's a, an obvious role here. I'm really excited to hear that you were able to work with Ms. Claymore. I know she's, I, obviously is gonna have a, has had, and I would expect her to have had some great contributions. So um, I'm eager to see you meet or beat your century club target and uh look forward to seeing uh you guys as a big actor in the community going forward. Thank you.
Mr. Amador?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Scanlon and team, I'm going to say. Um, it's a great initiative to see that what's coming before us and where we're trying to go. I do see the need for uh the organization within Commerce City. So as a question for you on your Centennial Club, do you have to be a business within Commerce City to be that membership or no?
No, no, that's a great question. Um, with the Centennial Club itself, ideally, I've been working very hard to harvest businesses within Commerce City. I'd like it to be ninety percent plus Commerce City businesses. But certainly, any business that has the best interest of Commerce City at heart is looking to grow in Commerce City, even if they happen to be, you know, headquartered or set up outside, just outside the boundaries. There, we're, we're happy to talk to them, let's put it that way. But if I may, there's one concern I do have, and I'm gonna use um Dell's Liquor Mart as an example. There, there's a business that's been in this community for generations now, right? I don't know if you guys know Dell's Liquor Mart, just across, just across Quebec there. There's a fellow, like I said, been in this community for generations. Can you imagine if we got a hundred businesses signed up? We've got this Centennial Club set forever. And then a fellow like him comes along and says, oh, I would have loved to have been a part of this. That's what concerns me and what keeps me awake at night. And I'd be happy to send anyone interested, the list of businesses we do have. If you see any businesses that are pillars of the community that you think should certainly have the opportunity, um, I would want to reach out to them. So uh, that's my concern, is that I'm missing a, you know, a younger brothers type of business out there. I have approached them.
So um, on that note, please uh send me some information for myself and my business. I'd be happy to contribute in your Centennial Club.
That'd be great. I, I will call you tomorrow.
Sounds good.
I just had a, a few comments. Um, you know, thank you for coming in. And this is something that Commerce City uh tried to do, oh, it must have been about eight, eight years ago, maybe a little longer. And there was a lot of pushback, a lot of pushback from the Commerce City Business Professionals Association, you know, and, and so, I mean, there was, there was entities that were worried their they, they were gonna, you know, they were gonna lose some, some of their capabilities or, or who, who handled what. Um, and at one time, and, and just so you know, Commerce City is a member of the Denver Metro Chamber, Metro North Chamber, Brighton Chamber, and Commerce City's new chamber, right?
Yep.
So um, it's important that, that we as, as a city try to use every venue we can to better our community. Um, that's why we're part of all of it, and we're part of CCBPA. Um, but there was a fracture in the, in the community back then. And I, I just, it's important to me, I want to see all of these entities working together for the betterment of our community. And I just don't know where you're at with um primarily, like the CCBPA, um, joining forces. Um, hopefully, you get there. I don't know where that's at. I want the chamber to be successful. Um, I want the chamber to be successful, not just for Commerce City, but for all the businesses that reside within this community that need someplace to call home when it comes to their issues and their, and, and their needs from the perspective of a chamber and what a chamber does. And I know Brighton's Chamber has been very, very effective in the city of Brighton. But I guess what I'm trying to get across is I want, I want the community to, to work together, and I want you to have the support of this community and not to have it be fractured because it's the best way to make it work for everybody and every business within this community. And I wish you a lot of luck. Um, and I will also extend all the support that I can give and that the city can give um to make it be successful.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yep, so thank you to the members that are here uh in the audience, Deborah, and, and uh I see my doctor back there. So uh, I think it's, I think it's great. And, and, you know, sometimes we argue about small things. And I, I really hope everybody can come to be together and wrap their arms around what, how, how big of a deal a really strong organization for our businesses can be in this community. And if, if we all played a role, um, it could, it could be uh one of the best things that could happen. So like I said, you got my support and, and I, I really wish you well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely. Anyone else? Mr. Bullock?
I want to thank you, Michael, for coming in. And um, at this point in time, this is exactly what the city needs, you know? Um, you never know what you need until you find out what you don't have. And I definitely think that we need a chamber that is gonna be a strong advocate agency for this city to put our name out throughout the metro region. Um, you're right, we're a player in the city, I mean, in the metro area now. And this is something that will just highlight us even more. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no one else, thanks again, and uh thank you all for, for the presentation. We look forward to an update as you continue to grow, and we're looking forward to that November uh timeframe.
November tenth kickoff.
November tenth kickoff. We'll be there. All right, moving on to administrative business. Does any of the council members have administrative business that they'd like to take up this evening? Mr. McElton?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I have two items. Um, and it's good we've got uh Mr. Scanlon here. Um, the, the first item relates to water quality concerns. I've been getting uh absolutely hammered um since, since we took uh, well, what we've come to sort of diagnose as being triggered by the Tower Road improvements that are currently underway. Um, the, those of us that didn't connect the dots immediately noticed um an exceptional uh shift in the impact of our water in our household chores. Um, it started off subtly enough as added film in the dishwasher and wondering if, you know, something hadn't been, you know, we didn't put a tablet in or you didn't put uh the rinse aid or something in there. And then you, you talked to a neighbor and all of a sudden you're hearing from each, each individual that, you know, they're seeing the same thing. And we have historically, in my twelve years in the community, seen sort of peaks and valleys in terms of the hardness of the water and have attributed that over time to certain seasonalities in terms of the water mixes with um our native stock, if you will, and the Denver water um that has contributed to or mixed in. Um, what we've seen with uh the last several months since the Tower Road construction has gotten underway, we now understand that the uh line that interconnects with Denver in that Tower Road corridor has been shut off. And so we are not seeing the mix of water uh from that Denver water source. And we're relying solely on, to my understanding, the South Adams County's uh alluvial well, uh, aquifers, if you will, that, that are providing that water. Um, when I talk to folks around the community, it does seem that we have some regional differences in terms of what people are experiencing. And I suspect, I don't have any hard evidence, and part of the reason I'm bringing this up is an administrative council business item is um some requests I'd like council's support of um for staff. I, I'm, I'm looking at what's happening right now, and I'm connecting it to some past um concerns. Uh, Shay Holmes, uh, who is the master developer for the reunion subdivision, um, has had, as I've come to understand it, uh, almost since its inception, massive difficulties and frustrations with water quality, uh, water pressure, consistency, um, that have actually caused that uh metropolitan district to invest significant dollars in rebuilding uh its water infrastructure to actually try and counter some of the infrastructure shortcomings that it's found with water pressure and, and the like. Um, anybody who takes a walk in our Second Creek Open Space um at certain times of year finds mineralization of the soft-surface trail. Uh, areas where the water table is a little higher, um, you find the same mineralized powder that you might find at your showerhead or in your dishwasher or the bottom of your hot water heater. The concern I have is this, and, and uh we talked a little bit about this in our study session last week. Um, I, I have a citizen who I've been trading uh emails and voicemails with, and we haven't been able to talk live, but she's apparently been in direct contact with a, a member of staff at the Water District, and I don't have a name. Um, but at each point that any of us, to my knowledge, have reached out to the district for any answer, we get a fairly pat response that says something along the lines of water provided by South Adams County Water and Sanitation meets safe drinking water standards as put forward by the EPA, period. Oh, and by the way, we do have higher levels of certain items that, oh, by the way, are helpful. Uh, well, they're helpful if you know what quantity or dosage you're taking them in, right? So if, for example, one of those elements is magnesium, uh, well, that's great. But if I'm taking magnesium on doctor's orders over and above what I am getting in my diet, um, and I now am getting an excessive amount of that, shouldn't I know the milligrams intake that I'm getting on ingesting that amount of magnesium? I, I'm, I'm frankly uh past frustrated with that attitude that it is just sort of a, hey, you should be saying, saying thank you for this added water component. So I, I want to keep this professional. At the end of the day, I'd like staff to engage the district to have uh a formal conversation on this. Uh, it may make sense to first uh ask that this be added to the agenda at our upcoming Water uh Commission meeting, which I believe is on October seventeenth or eighteenth, just a couple of weeks out. Um, I don't want to, I don't want to tamp on the progress that the city and the district have made, um, particularly in the last year, year and a half. Uh, through the Water Commission in particular, there's been some fantastic partnership. But when I start to hear folks who say, I've lived in this community for a year, and we're going to sell because I was not aware of the added tax that I would have to pay in terms of buying bottled water, buying filtration devices, and to see the amount of money that people are putting into trying to avoid using water that comes out of the tap, um, I, I think we have to have a real, serious conversation about why. Um, certainly, it's anyone's option to improve or maximize the quality of their water, but we should have as a right in our community the ability to turn on a tap and have water that is not uh going to be, uh, to have a negative impact on our homes' infrastructure, whether that's your coffee maker or your dishwasher or your showerhead. And if in fact, there is an acknowledgement or a sense that And if, in fact, there is an acknowledgement or a sense that the quality of our water is as it is, and it will be as hard as it will be, then it needs to be communicated to a new homeowner or to an existing homeowner what the ramifications of that hardness are over time to their home. Um, does it mean that you have to have a water softener in order to not affect or damage the infrastructure in your home? And while we get a water quality report from the district on an annual basis, given the fluctuations that we've seen and the no notice of the most recent change, we need to have some serious conversations about what the role of the district needs to be, and can the city help partner in communicating these things? I know in the distant past, we worked, um, to include the Water District in the city's news publication to try and help provide an avenue to get word messaging out to the community. They're no longer part of that. Um, so, I, I, my frustration is on behalf of the, I think there are, it's up to forty or fifty exchanges now in the neighborhood, uh, nextdoor, um, dot com community conversation from neighborhoods clear over by Buffalo Run, Reunion South Lawn, Northside, Frontera, uh, you name it. Um, people who are at wits' end and don't know who to talk to. Um, many who have tried to reach out to the, to the district and gotten similar, pat answers. Um, and so, before, and many of these folks are calling for, you know, get the news out here and make a big deal out of it, and I'm trying to say, let's, let's have an adult conversation about this. I've encouraged them to reach out to their Water Board members, and I don't know how many have actually done so. Um, but I wanna make sure that we get some formal conversations going because part of the challenge at the end of the day in this community, and this is something the chamber hopefully can help, uh, address, perception. People move to Commerce City from all over the world, and depending on where they've come from, they may have come from a community where that city was responsible for fire and police and water and all of those things that we sort of associate with their municipality. That's not the case here. But the perception for the great many of our citizens is that it's our fault, right? And so, while we work so hard and have worked so hard for years to overcome perceptions and, and really change the conversation within our community, when things like this happen and the perception, because we're silent on the issue, is that it's our fault. We're not doing anything about it. That's, that's the part that also makes this, to me, a city concern. And if the district doesn't wanna see itself out in front of this issue, then we have to have a very hard conversation about how do we partner to have that conversation? Or do we find ourselves in a position of saying, "Not our fault," and pointing down the street? And I don't wanna see us get into that mode, but as a council member, when approached about this issue, I don't have any other options. If I point people to the district and they have a, an unacceptable, in my read, um, response from the district, then, then that's a challenge. And so, I, 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 I believe others on council have had similar challenges. Um, I will pause, let the city manager, uh, jump in.
Go ahead, Brian.
Well, just to put it, uh, shortly, we understand your point. Uh, the next Water Commission meeting is October eighteenth. We've added that as an agenda so that, uh, you and Mayor Ford can, uh, initiate a conversation directly on this specific issue with the two Water Board members who are representatives on the Water Commission. Also think it'd be a good suggestion about, uh, greater collaboration, uh, on how and when to communicate, uh, with the community. Uh, we've worked a great deal on really upping our level of timely communication to the community, and we can share some of those things that we've learned with the Water District. Uh, and by doing so, it puts you as council members in a better position to be able to answer these important questions that come up.
Thanks very much.
All right, there's some other comments as well. Um, JD, on the same topic?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, and not to beat a dead horse death, but since I have sat in this position, that has been the number one amount of complaints I have received as a counselor is water and the quality of water. Um, I have never experienced anything like this. I did not know when I bought my house that if I didn't put in a water softener that all the plumbing in the house would eventually be clogged. Um, we did put one in, in time. It took some scraping of the, uh, basin in the bathrooms to get that buildup off, and that occurred within probably four to six weeks of living there. Um, I know the gentleman across the street didn't and had to have all the plumbing, uh, redone in his entire house. The guy catty-cornered to me, put in a reverse osmosis at ten thousand dollars of a cost to himself. Uh, my thing is, is with what Jason is saying, the reports that we get, um, I can't, in my mind, drink this water and think it's safe, and I don't. I buy bottled water. Um, everybody I know drinks bottled water. I will not give it, tap water to my dog. When I see what it does to my plumbing, when I can see what, that it ruins clothes, um, I don't think it's good for me. Then I also will not put salt in my water softener because I don't think that's healthy. So, at a really high cost, we run potassium through the water softener. Um, I don't know what the increase would be to give us, uh, a better quality water that is much softer. Um, but like I said, even when I try to counterreact and get the softer water, I don't think that is really, really good for your health to put that kind of salt into you. Um, I don't know, is this water safe for all ages? Um, is the water safe, as Jason's saying, if you have health issues? Uh, doctors tell you all the time to watch your salt intake, so if we are dumping tons of salt in there?
Um, one second there, uh, Ms. Carson. I think, uh, we, one of the things we need to focus on is in administrative business, and I know we had a presentation in front of a gentleman for the, for the Chamber of Commerce, and I know he happens to be a water, uh, happens to be a Water Board member. But this is administrative business. It's not intended to be, uh, uh, a discussion with, uh, someone in the audience, even though he's here. I think what the direction or the request for direction from Councilman McAldowney was is that we allow staff the opportunity to do what Mr. McAldowney said and talk to the district about how to better communicate with the public and to, to take care of some of the concerns that we're getting from residents. And I understand there's several people who have had issues with the water, and I, I understand those frustrations. Um, but I wanna focus on not this turning into a debate. Because Mr. Scanlon's here, I'd like to continue to move it towards the suggestion and, and support of the council to allow staff to engage that district.
And that's fine, um, as long as it includes a very specific, detailed report of what the values are of minerals and such in that water, that it is understandable for everybody out there, not just that it falls within the guidelines.
All right, thank you. Mr. Douglas?
Uh, yes. I know, um, every year, South Adams puts out a report as far as the contents, uh, the minerals and all that are in the water, parts per trillion, billions. And, um, before you skip booklet, now you can get it online, you know, in PDF form. And I appreciate that, but not everybody can dive into that and, and sector things out to understand exactly what's in the water. Um, I would like to, I've talked about before, what the, the cost implications would be that going forward as far as these, um, new constructive homes have water softeners built into them and at a minimal cost, uh, what that looks like and for the people who, who have the water softener, who needs those, what the benefit could be from the city providing, um, some of those products at, at a, at a, not for free, but just at a, at a huge, um, discount and, and include the, the Water District in there because not only pay your, your service for your water, but we also pay taxes to the, uh, South Adams as well. So, we need to have those discussions, and those are uncomfortable conversations because the place where I work at, we sell the most amount of bottled water, um, I think, in the state because for our drinking purposes. Uh, if we had more racks in, 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 in use where, uh, at, uh, my job, I'm sure we would fill those up because we run out, uh, about every other day. So, if those, um, questions could come up when you discuss this, um, we have two Water, Water Board, um, members, um, you know, bring that up and, and see where we're at because we need to go forward, and it's gonna be, it's gonna take some time for those changes to be made district-wide. Uh, we're talking maybe within maybe five years or so, but, uh, if that happens, it's not something that's gonna happen right away. Um, so I appreciate if we can ask those hard questions and, and get some concrete answers and, and then next if we could, uh, you know, involve the, the citizens so they can understand what's happening. But I do appreciate the approach we're, that we're going to. Uh, thank you, Councilman McAldowney, for addressing this. And, um, we're, we're not here to, to beat anybody up, but we really appreciate those conversations because those are the things going forward. On a daily basis, we all get asked those questions, and, I mean, most folks moving in here came from a city where, um, they can tell right away the difference in the water, so.
And, you know, uh, I would tell you, I appreciate all the conversation. I think it's important, um, to engage in a respectful conversation with the district. I think that, that the important thing to know is that, um, we're trying to build a community and, and economic development, new home building and growth, um, are affected by many things that are out of our control, this, the, the, this Water District, the school districts, things of that nature. We are, all of us that serve and are sitting up here want to build the best community we can build. And I was one that grew up in this community, and I, I drank the water my whole life, so it was normal to me. I notice a difference when I go somewhere else. But that doesn't mean that I haven't put a water softener in my home, 'cause I did. I, I think it's important that we look at how we can continue to better ourselves and work in cooperation with the district. I watched as the Klein Water Treatment Facility was put in place to help with water quality. I watched as the negotiations to, um, participate with the four thousand acre feet from Denver to be able to help make our water softer. And I, I know some of those things were, were big efforts and they helped a lot, but it doesn't mean we're to where we need to be in total. And so, what I would say is, we need to engage in a respectful conversation about what are the next steps? What does the district need to do to help improve water quality? And how can we be helpful in getting that message across to be able to make sure that we're, we're working as partners to build a better community? Um, and so, I know as, as many complaints and calls and emails as we have all got about the water hardness, uh, up in the north because of the, the distribution line that ties to Denver, I know there are some effects, and they're negative effects, and we're hearing that loud and clear. I'm sure the Water Board members are hearing that from the community as well. Um, but I'd like to do everything we can to make sure we maintain a good relationship with the district and do what we can to help move things in the right direction to help improve our water quality. So, I am very supportive of what Mr. McAldowney has brought forward. I am one of the representatives, uh, myself and Mr. McAldowney, of the Water Commission that we have together. This will be a topic that we will bring up at the Water Commission. And with the direction that's been asked for tonight, um, which I am asking, gonna ask for a vote on, to allow, uh, staff to engage with the district about the hardness issues and the water quality issues and how we can, um, can work consecutively or concurrently with the district to improve our overall community. So, with that said, seeing no other discussion, um, Mr. McAldowney, why don't you make that motion to, to allow staff to do what you're asking?
Would, uh, move to have staff engage with South Adams County Water and Sanitation to discuss the, uh, water hardness issues that have been exacerbated by the Tower, uh, Interconnect and, uh, explore opportunities for partnership and communication on, uh, engaging, uh, with the community to help understand the issue and find ways to, uh, overcome, uh, or improve the hardness issue.
Perfect. Is there a second? Mr. Amador?
Second.
A motion and a second to give that direction to staff by council. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, saying nay. Motion's carried. You guys have direction. Um, and I think it's beneficial that there is a Water Board member in the audience so that, um, he, he can help understand and, and, and take back some of those frustrations. So, thank you for being here, Michael. I would gladly have given you a chance to speak, but it just wouldn't be professional in, in all of our meetings to whoever was in the audience to come up for those things. But we will definitely be talking, so thank you. You have another item, Mr. McAldowney?
I did, and I have a final piece on this water item I forgot to mention. Um, our latest CML update actually has, uh, a grant opportunity for water quality improvement efforts. So, I will leave this with staff. Um, it sounds like this is open to, uh, qualified governmental entities, municipalities, et cetera. So, perhaps this is an item that can be included in those conversations to see if there's some partnering that we can do on pursuing grants of that nature. Some of the things that it talks about are testing, um, plans, exploratory efforts, not unlike we would do for major roadworks when we wanna look at, uh, investigating what our options are. So, maybe a way to bring some money into the conversation that could be used to explore, um, possible ways forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, Mr. Bullock?
Do you want me to, can I do my second?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Sorry.
No, go ahead.
So, with, moving past water, um, my next item is regarding the, uh, the detours for the Tower Road construction. Um, I was out of the state when we had the initial conversations earlier this year around some of the alternatives for how we were gonna, uh, control traffic during segment shutdowns of Tower Road. Um, we're currently under a three-month, uh, detour that has traffic reusing sections of Eighty-Eighth and Buckley that we had shut down, um, just after the completion of Ninety-Sixth Avenue. Um, I think literally within the second or third day of that, my wife saw an accident at the intersection of Chambers and Ninety-Sixth, um, with increased volumes, something that we've been concerned with, but past, uh, you know, explorations have not shown sufficient warrant for a signal at that Ninety-Sixth and Chambers intersection. Um, as I drive the Chambers Road corridor, sometimes that's my way into city council on Monday nights, so during a rush hour with people coming back into the community primarily. Um, we have, uh, I am concerned, I'm as concerned with the current detour and the difficulties it's having on increasing travel times and such for folks who are coming down Ninety-Sixth, coming down Buckley Road and joining Ninety-Sixth Avenue. Um, when you take a look at that during rush hour, uh, in the evening, traffic is all the way down Buckley Road, it's bending back on Eighty-Eighth, um, there's a lot of load. Um, but fortunately, there's no other place for those folks to go, right? Captive audience until they get to Ninety-Sixth Avenue. My concern is, is, as difficult as this detour is, I am frankly terrified for the next phase when we detour traffic down Ninety-Sixth into Chambers. Um, Chambers Road has no protected turn lanes left or right. Um, it is the primary path by which our school buses move into and out of the Frontera neighborhood for the Second Creek Elementary School. Um, I believe there are, I don't believe we have any buses for Stewart that come in through that western entrance into the neighborhood. I believe they're all coming in off of Joplin and a Hundred and Fourth based on their bus route. But the concern is, for anybody who's driven Chambers Road southbound and finds somebody who wants to turn left into the Frontera neighborhood, you are stuck. There is no protected turn for that person who needs to move east. And there is also nothing to abate traffic moving to the north. So, the people coming from Ninety-Sixth toward a Hundred and Fourth are moving, and they're not giving, right? Um, they're certainly not following any speed limits, so there's not a gap. And again, I'm concerned that if we now, I'm gonna just roughly say quadruple or better the volumes on Chambers Road, we're gonna have some accidents just by happenstance, but we're gonna have some people that are gonna go out of their head with frustration because they won't be able to turn. We'll have school buses that can't get into the neighborhood or get out of the neighborhood, um, and that's gonna impact, have a sort of a trickle-down impact on bus routes. Um, so, I would like to have staff work with our contractor to fully analyze the current flows with our current detour, to understand our vehicles by hour so that we can see what we're getting. I know right now we're seeing a diversion once we hit Ninety-Sixth Avenue. Some folks are moving back to Tower Road, others are moving to the west. I think most folks are in fact moving back to Tower. But when we bring all of that traffic to Chambers, we just, there's just nowhere for folks to go. So, I wanna understand what our plan is for that as it stands. Uh, are we planning to put a temporary signal in place like we have at Ninety-Sixth Avenue and Buckley? Um, if not, we need to. Um, I also wanna see if there are any interim measures that can be made to the Chambers corridor to make that a more effective corridor. Um, we have zero improvements on the west half of that road. Um, and if we can't move people through that and protect turning motions, we're in for a, a ton of trouble. Um, I would also like to- to have, and I know Steve advocated for this regularly as our board member with E-470, I would like to have a re-exploration of a partnership with E-470 to look at moving traffic onto that easternmost lane. If you have ever driven E-470, you know that when you get off at the Ninety-Sixth Avenue ramp and you move to the north, you effectively have a protected lane because that lane is, stays there and becomes the Tower Road exit. So, you could effectively look at having that lane act as our detour, right? Um, which would have no negative impact on our community, um, particularly the, the Frontera and Chambers corridors. Um, but as sort of option C and D, if you will, um, we only have about two thousand feet of open land between Ninety-Sixth Avenue and either Landmark or Walden. And I would offer, if we're gonna put interim roads in place like we did temporarily on Tower Road, where we're gonna put in enough, uh, road base and asphalt to move vehicles completely off of the existing alignment, uh, not unlike we did on Hundred and Fourth when we initially constructed that through the Second Creek open space, that I would actually suggest we look at either of those roads, which have, they're wider than Chambers Road is. They have a shorter, uh, impact on the community and it may make sense to connect folks from Ninety-Sixth through either one of those avenues. They both reach lights once they reach Hundred and Fourth. They don't have impacts on school traffic. They have limited interconnects with other cross traffic. And so, I, I don't see why we couldn't potentially put in, uh, a temporary surface to move vehicles through that, through that, uh, angle. At the end of the day, um, it's about safety and it's about minimizing the negative impacts on our community. We have to have these projects done. There is no question. There's gonna be pain. Um, but we also have Highway Two coming up soon. And, uh, again, I'm, I'm concerned that there are things we could be doing a little differently that might help, uh, ease some of the sting and help increase the safety. So, I would just ask for council support of those explorations.
I, I would have, happen to agree with what you said, especially, um, relooking at E-470. Steve Douglas?
Uh, yes, thanks, Jason. That was gonna be part of my, um, uh, council administration business, one of them. Um, we did get an, initial cost, what that's gonna be per day. They have the ability to, to turn, um, that reader off because just, just the nature of that third lane being protected both ways can be turned off. And they, the impact would be fifteen hundred dollars a day. Uh, wouldn't, wouldn't be any higher, even though traffic and all that's improved. They said they would do that just for that corridor. Um, Maria has those numbers and she's negotiating that with, with, um, the contractors now. Would we, what would be really interested, uh, uh, very interested, I mean, interesting situation would be, not only do they do the improvements between, uh, Eighty-Eighth and Ninety-Sixth, but they do the improvements on Hundred and Third and Ninety-Sixth and have the route, uh, as you say, go on Hundred and Fourth to Ninety-Sixth. That way, you have the traffic still going where it's going right now, but then they could work on that section, I don't think work the section at, at the same time or have the ability to, to do that, but that could offset as far as, 'cause I know by having that shut down, it's gonna, um, give them a hundred and eighty days, um, as far as making time, yeah. Uh, and then the other ones, like a hundred and thirty days, being, being shut from what the initial, it's still being, um, done and that doesn't need time. So, uh, I'm not the expert in this. Um, Maria's and if she could, uh, shed some light on this situation, that would be great.
Maria, you wanna give us a, an update, an idea of what we can do to help improve the traffic flows?
So, um, the current detour went into place last Wednesday and, uh, we are monitoring the situation at Ninety-Sixth and Chambers. So, um, but as you said, Councilmember McElDowney, they are seeming to turn either left or right and some people are choosing to go left and then up through Chambers, which we anticipated. But, um, if the volumes become too great there, we will need a temporary signal at Ninety-Sixth and Chambers. And so, we're just gonna watch that for a few days and, and monitor that. As far as the, say, what we call, so we're, right now, we're in, um, Segment Two, which is eight, Ninety-Sixth to Eighty-Eighth. And so, that's the detour that we're taking is along, uh, Buckley and Eighty-Eighth Avenue. We are still continuing to explore with E-470 for Segment Three, which is essentially Hundred and Fourth to Ninety-Sixth, using E-470 as a detour, as Councilmember Douglas said. We are not, based on the direction from council, uh, going to use Chambers and Ninety-Sixth as the detour. So, based on the impacts of the neighbors and then the impacts to the businesses there at the corner. So that, that option is off the table. Um, the, uh, but, um, so I guess that's, that's it for now. We are, so, we would move from Segment Two, which will take about three months, and then, um, probably right after the first of the year sometime, we go into Segment Three. So, we still feel like we have a little bit of time to work with E-470 on the exact costs.
Great. Thank you for the update. Any other discussion on, on Tower?
Yeah, I just wanted to add too, also gotta estimate, I just sent it to everyone here, um, and, uh, Brian and folks in the front here, um, what the cost would be, just say if we, if you had the cars detoured off of Ninety-Sixth and go through the Plaza, down through, uh, Topeka, that's, uh, three million dollars a month. So, I know that's not gonna be an option.
Three million a month?
Three million a month.
Wow. All right. I'm gonna go back to Mr. McElDowney for a motion to give direction to staff based on your comments.
I don't know that we have a motion necessary, given the fact that Chambers is off the table and staff is actively monitoring the current detour. Um, I would really ask that we look again at that, uh, signalization of Ninety-Sixth and Chambers, um, if possible, and maybe Mr. Smith can help get this update, just what our accident frequency is there. I, I feel like, uh, I know we had an accident, I, I'm losing all track of time. It could've been a year ago. Um, when we were talking about signalizing that, uh, we had somebody hit the transformer box at that corner. Um, we just had, I believe, an accident within the first couple, three days of this detour being in place. So, I'd like to just get a snapshot of accidents at that corner. Um, I, you know, we have a very short turn lane that loads, uh, northbound onto Chambers and, and I'm concerned with, I'm, I'm concerned that these factors are gonna exacerbate with our already bad conditions and, you know, maybe we have the ability to put a temporary signal in there until it meets full warrants for a permanent signal. But I would move that those actions be investigated by staff.
All right. I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second, but Mr. Bullock, all those in favor of giving direction, um, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Anybody opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Staff has direction. Did you have anything else, Mr. McElDowney? All right, I'm gonna move on to, uh, Mr. Bullock.
Yes, I received a postcard from Vanji Roundtree today and, uh, on our next telephone town hall, there's this gentleman that would like to be called because he has issues and he's not technically, well, it's a, it's hard for him to get in. So, she asked if we could give this to staff so they could call him during our next telephone town hall and he be able to, uh, give his message of what his concerns are in the city. And I've never received a, the postcard for a telephone town hall, but I think if you wanna get the information out, this is a good way to do it. So, I'll give it to the city manager.
Perfect. Did you have anything else? I did, but I, I forgot. How about, uh, how about you say thank you for the opportunity to go and get educated?
Oh, yes, I do have something else. Uh, at the next regular meeting, uh, me and Mr. Douglas will be given a full, uh, um, briefing or full on our, um,
Griffin Madison.
Conference we just came back from in Madison. I also have books from one of the, uh, sessions for all the council members, plus the information on different things that are going to be at our conference in Pittsburgh, all the classes. So, everybody, I have it ahead of time, so you don't have to worry about it. Um, that'll be coming in. So, by the next study session, you'll get that, so you'll be well up on it. But me and Mr. Douglas will have a presentation at the next council meeting here.
All right, thank you. Mr. Douglas?
Uh, yes, um, a, a couple of things here. Uh, thanks, Jason, for bringing that up on the, the detour. Uh, very, a lot of people are very frustrated, so thank you for that conversation. Um, a question I had on Potomac going north where the road shut down, there's a raised median, there was a, there's a median there in the road as you, you know, go from, um, Hundred and Fourth north of Potomac. And some of those areas have two lanes and then it goes down to single lanes. With the construction of the road that we're doing, is that gonna continue to be two lanes or just gonna be go from the two down to one?
Come back up, Maria.
Um, I believe, I have not driven up there, but they just have the type-three barricades across there. If there's additional signage needed to clarify that the left-hand turn lane is now no longer through lane and just has, can only be a left, I think we'll need to either cone that off or do something else to make people aware of that.
Okay, but on the expansion?
Mr. Douglas's question is, what's the profile, uh, as we look to pave the gravel portion? What's the cross-section that we're contemplating?
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Um, yes, so, right at, uh, I think it'd be Hundred and Eighth there is where the current pavement ends and it would transition after the intersection from two through lanes to one through lane. So, will be one lane in each direction north of Hundred and Eighth.
Is, is there gonna be a median in the middle or is it just gonna be open?
I'm sorry.
Is there gonna be a median in the middle or is it just gonna be open?
For a portion of it, yes. Between Hundred and Eighth up to Hundred and Twelve, there will be some sections with median and some without.
Okay, and that's gonna have a, uh, put a curb and sidewalks in as well?
Correct.
Okay. Um, and the other thing on, uh, let's see, Potomac, when you go down, um, west of Potomac across Highway Two, get to Peoria Parkway, sorry, um, people having a hard time visibly looking, um, to the east and west because the hardy pampas are so high, isn't, could we start cutting those grasses down, uh, because the visibility in that corridor is very hard?
At Hundred and Fourth in Peoria?
Uh, that, that particular area, but then also the whole corridor going down. Anyway, people are, you know, going through those intersections on the off-streets to get across, just the visibility is, makes it really hard because the grasses have grown so high. If there's any way we can start cutting those, I know, I'm sure we're thinking about doing it later on because we're having, um, um, Green Day where we're bringing our, our, our products to, here to the Civic Center. Uh, but I'm not sure on your calendar schedule when they were gonna start cutting those.
Yeah, um, we can certainly look at that if it's a sightline or a safety issue there. We can look at that entire corridor.
All right, thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Douglas?
That's it.
All right, thank you. Does anybody else have any administrative council business this evening? Saying none, we're gonna move on in the agenda. Next items, reports. Mr. McBroom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a very short city manager update tonight that we sent via email just prior to the start of the meeting. We did send it. Normally, we send the city manager update and the work schedule as one attachment. It is two attachments tonight, uh, but it's a very short update. Please contact me if you have any questions.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Uh, just briefly, I sent an email today with a report on the city attorney office activity for the last quarter, along with an attached litigation update for your review. If you have any questions about those, you can contact me directly. We can schedule an executive session on any of those items. I will be contacting everybody over the next, uh, few weeks, months, so we can develop a better way to report what the city attorney's office actually does, something that you might find more useful, unless you think that what we provide right now is, is great. So, in which case, okay. So.
Well, today, I know he read the, uh, ACC, um, documents and that had to be fun.
Yeah, he did at least one thing. So, thank you.
Thanks. All right, I'll get into my report. Um, I, I met with some members from Keywood Construction. Um, we had a rotary meeting. Uh, I also had a meeting with Brian and Cal Folonwider. Um, I also went and, uh, spoke at the transportation event that our Economic Development Department helped put on up here at Dick's Sporting Arts Park. Um, we had the grand opening of Villages East Park, and I believe all of council was there. We had our ACC meeting, which was me and Councilman Teeter, uh, Senior Volunteer Recognition Dinner. I know we had several, uh, members of our council were out of town and, and, and were busy, but, um, it was great that there were still several of us there. Um, and congratulations to all those, uh, volunteers. Um, and then we had the, uh, Meet the Spaces on Colorado Boulevard, which is a new art facility that's going in, uh, near our, um, TOD-related development. Um, I did not get to make it there. Uh, I, I do know, um, both Mr. Bo, Bullock and, uh, Mr. Douglas's wives were at that event and looking forward to, uh, that, that new piece there. Um, I did participate in the homecoming parade for Adams City High School. And then, uh, myself and, um, Councilman Carson both, uh, attended the Bella Yoga ribbon cutting. So, I think that sums up my report. If someone has something they'd like to add to that report, um, now's the time. So, uh, I've got, Mr. Douglas, do you have anything to add?
Uh, no, we're gonna have a report next week on the trip to Madison, Wisconsin. Uh, I appreciate, uh, council and, uh, citizens for allowing me to go.
Thanks. Mr. Amador?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did also attend the, uh, Adams fourteen, Adams City High School Homecoming Events Parade, Football Game. Uh, Adams City did put a good fight up. However, uh, Montbello outscored them by two points. Um, that being said, I'm also engaging with, uh, Adams fourteen, uh, school district as well on their facility naming, uh, committee chair, basically. And so, there will be some, uh, public engagement on November ninth for community, uh, members to help name the swimming pool of the Adams City High School. So, um, that will be coming down the pipe and we're figuring out how to, um, get the message out to the community. So, that's my report.
All right. Mr. Bullock?
I would also like to thank the citizens for allowing me and Mr. Douglas to go to Madison, Wisconsin for the NLC Summit Meeting that was held from Tuesday of last week to, um, Saturday. Uh, it was very informative and you will begin to report at the next council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Carson?
I just wanted to remind everybody out there that October thirteenth is the Quality Community Foundation Annual Beer and Wine Tasting and Silent Auction at Bison Grill. Um, thirty dollars a person and fifty-five a couple. So, everybody attend.
Thank you. All right, that looks like everybody. Um, if there be no further business to come before the city commerce, city, city council this evening, we are adjourned.